We're going to have a couple of water for this workshop meeting tonight, and we have a proposed agenda in such a places, and I would entertain a motion to adopt this time.
Mayor number three, the Estrians safety is going to come up, is that right?
Right.
I believe we adopt the amended agenda.
Motion second, any further discussion? Your agreement all in papers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, so we're going to begin tonight by talking a little bit about the budget, and I'm going to turn it over to you this time.
Well, what we would like to do, since we had originally planned on three items, we'd like to spend as much time on the budget as we possibly can. We do need to leave by twenty minutes till seven, because at the regular meeting, you have a lot of folks that are going to be sworn in, I know you want to meet them and congratulate them. So what we're asking, Mayor, if you and the council would allow Ryan's item, which is number two, to go first, and then we'll spend the rest of the evening working on the budget up till about twenty minutes till seven, so is that acceptable?
Sounds like a plan to me.
Several weeks ago, Ryan talked with you about the possibility of allowing contractor offices in the commercial corridor. He sent out a survey with a lot of good information, locations, we got excellent feedback from the mayor and council, a lot of diverse opinions, and what we'd like to do tonight is see if we can bring this into focus. So Ryan, if you make the presentation, please.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Good evening to you, Mayor, city council members. As we spoke, I believe it was at the last workshop or the workshop before, staff was getting quite a few requests over the years for contractors' offices within the corridor commercial zone, and this screen just kind of summarizes, you know, the way a typical unified development ordinance amendment occurs. And obviously, we're down to the city council, survey portion is now behind us, and we're trying to prep the agenda item and the ordinance language that we can move forward and bring forth that for a public hearing and a consideration and possible decision by the city council. So, the current use table within the unified development ordinance identifies building, heating, plumbing, or electrical contractors as a special use in the corridor commercial zone. There's a lot of businesses that were now, are now nonconforming because they don't have that special use permit. So, because we've had those requests, and we recognize that there was a lot of existing businesses, and as we showed you on the pictures at the last workshop, that a lot of cases, they're professional offices, that's what they look like. Occasionally, they have some outward appearance, outside storage, that there's some concern there, but we thought that it would be a good thing to have it considered to become a permitted use in the corridor commercial zone. So we kind of asked the question, we're going to break this up into two different types of contractors' offices, those that have no outside storage and those with outside storage. So the first one, we think, is kind of the easy one, which is, should we bring forth an amendment to allow contractors' offices with no outside storage within the corridor commercial as a permitted zone? And based on the survey, the planning board recommendation, and planning staff consideration and recommendation, that's what we intend to do based on the survey results unless council gives us any feedback to steer us a different direction, but we'll bring back a revision that would allow indoor storage, contractors' offices as a permitted use in the corridor commercial zone. And this is what that amendment would look like, you know, specifically without indoor, without outdoor storage, additional standards here, which basically would read, as we specified before, you know, heavy vehicles with more than two axles, equipment, similar items, they would have to be stored inside, and a lot of our contractors' offices can make that work today. Or, they have an off-site storage location elsewhere where they keep most of these items that's in the industrial zone or elsewhere that's where it's permitted. So that's the first part we plan to bring, if nothing else, we plan to bring that forward for consideration. The second part is where it gets a little bit more, we don't have quite as clear direction based on the survey results, and that's with the outdoor storage. So staff and the planning board recommended originally that we change the special use to permitted use, and we have additional standards. And we asked the question of city council through the surveys, should we allow contractors' offices with outdoor storage as a permitted use in the corridor commercial zone? Two said yes, one said no, and then two said leave it as a special use. So really, don't have any clear direction other than, you know, leave it as it is or make it permitted. So, what we are proposing is that we make it, so this is staff's suggestion, is that we make it a permitted use and have additional standards, and we talked about those additional standards at your previous meeting. And this is what we would suggest as the proposal. And I think the first three, really, probably no real concerns there. Basically, the use cannot be with any of the required setbacks, perimeter lawns, buffers. That's pretty standard with anything in Jacksonville. If you have a required buffer, you can't place storage in a buffer. So that's just normal language that we have throughout the ordinance. You cannot store things so that it's, you cannibalize it, that it basically becomes a source of parts, a junk. So you can't have it that way stored outside. Now, if you have some inside room, that's where you put that, then certainly you can do that on the inside of the building. Basically, that you keep the parking lot and the storage area where you can have proper stacking of vehicles, circulation, turning movements. Once again, standard language as it relates to parking lots and vehicle accommodation areas and even storage areas, basically, we want to make sure that vehicles can maneuver the site. So as far as the screening piece goes for the outdoor storage, you know, we asked, you know, a series of questions of city council, and here's the survey results, and two members stated no screening unless it's visible from the street right of way, two said, you know, screen from all street views, which really, those are kind of really the same. And then other, the other response was, well, the council member considers screening, but there are some security advantages to not having it screened, which we kind of talked about before. We also asked, well, if you have screening, what type of fencing would we want to see? And once again, chain link with some sort of a fabric or slats, two said that's what would be preferred, one stated wood, and then one stated chain link without screening, that way the security piece is at least dealt with accordingly, and then the other, once again, considered it, I'm sorry, should be fenced based on the most economical structure that would encompass the structure, yet be uniform with the established businesses. So if the business is on either side head chain link, why make them put up a block fence? It'll let it be in harmony with one another. You know, outdoor storage shall be established, so the question was, you know, they can have it anywhere on the site, which two said, sure, anywhere, as long as it's not in landscaped areas, two said, put it behind the wall of the building, and one would be other, which would be the distance should be determined by what should make it uniform with the area in which the storage is located. So once again, considering, you know, the area that the location is adjacent to. So we took the survey results and we're trying to put forth our recommendation, and, let's see, this, my, this, okay, so this is different than what I had earlier, so.
Did the city attorney change the standards on it?
Somebody changed the standard. So I'm going to go based on what I remember. So, basically, the storage be located behind the principal structure, the second bullet should be, I'm sorry, that's a problem, sorry, that it be screened with landscaping and/or a fence. So that gives the applicant the opportunity to choose which way, but if it's screened and it's visible from the street, they have to, if the storage area is visible from a street, they have to do something, but that gives them more latitude to choose fencing, landscaping, or a combination of the two versus hard fast, you've got to build a fence or wall. So that gives them more latitude. Basically, the items stored shall not exceed the height of the screening wall, obviously that would exclude the equipment and vehicles, there was some discussion about that at their last workshop.
So, for example, if you were stacking up plumbing supplies, you could stack them up to eight feet if that's the height of the fence.
Correct.
But on the other hand, you could have a plumbing supply repair vehicle that was eleven feet tall.
Correct. And once again, the equipment of heavy vehicles, we're trying to differentiate between like a standard work van or truck versus heavy equipment, so the work vans and things could be parked in the normal parking lot, could be in front of the building, but the heavier equipment and vehicles would be behind the building in the storage area and screened. So, this is what staff, looking at the suggestions that council made on the survey, we would suggest that we make it a permitted use, and the primary reason is, a lot of these locations are existing. Anytime you have an existing site and you put them through a special use permit process, that is not something that's a very, I wouldn't call it a favorable process, to get a survey of an existing site that may be difficult to meet the standards, you know, once you go through the survey expense and time, you know, if you can meet the standards, go through the process, screen the back area with fencing or landscaping or both, and that way the visual concern is addressed, and I think that's the key thing is, staff is just worried about, and it may not be every location, but there's an occasional location to where they could have a lot of equipment behind, you know, on the site that's visible. And the one site that comes to mind, and I don't have a really good example other than this one is, there's a, and it's not even a contractor office, but Longley Supplies, and I hate to use them as an example, but they are a, they are a supply, it's a retail or wholesale type business. Let's say that they closed down and a contractor office wanted to go there, they have so much visibility on Bell Fork and Highway seventeen right next to the trail, that that's the type of area that we would want to have screened for the contractors' offices.
They're not nonconforming, I mean, they were just built in the past five or seven years.
They are, they are not a contractor office.
Okay.
Yeah, they are a wholesale sales.
Right.
Retail type establishment.
You know, if you use Longley as an example, though, you know, we all drive by it at least once a week, some of you probably three or four times a day, you never notice the storage yard. It has a chain link fence, it has no slats in it, it's not a solid wood, it's just a chain link fence. Why is it you never notice it? Well, number one, you're driving and looking straight ahead because you're all good drivers, right? But number two, it's the landscaping. All the crepe myrtles that are along the rails to trails there intercept the eyesight, and that's what you actually focus on, is the first thing that you come to. So, I would say to you that if you're going to allow them, personally, I have never cared for chain link fence that has slats. The slats fade in time, they start falling apart, they get ripped, you got holes and so forth. I would favor that you have chain link, that you don't allow wood, because in time, the same thing, wood begins to deteriorate, it needs to be painted, it gets broken, require chain link fence, and then require landscaping to simply soften it, because you're not ever going to hide everything that's behind there. You want to use the landscaping to intercept the visual, I mean, that would be my recommendation to you. I think we can go back, though, and just ask you to give us some direction, are you comfortable with Ryan's suggestion on corridor commercial with inside storage being a permitted use? Everybody good with that? Corridor commercial with outside being a permitted use with development standards? So then it gets down to the development standards, so let's take them one at a time. Ryan, walk through what your recommended standards are.
Alright, so as with other uses throughout the code, that the outdoor storage areas could not be located within a required setback, perimeter lawn, or required buffer. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Basically, that materials, equipment, vehicles, or similar products shall not be parked or stored in the outside storage area as a source of parts. Everybody good? Alright. That the use shall ensure proper functioning of the site related to vehicle stacking, circulation, and turning movements. Alright, moving forward to the last two. That the storage area be behind the principal structure versus in front of, or closer to the road than the building itself.
Yeah, that is behind the front wall or behind the entire building?
It would be behind the principal structure, so the Longley supply, that would kind of force the area over to behind the building, unless it's modified.
So you're saying if the building was here, they couldn't put the fence beside the truck, and that would be behind the building, it's got to be behind the back door?
It's got to be behind the building, and if that's a double frontage, unless we specify otherwise, if it's a double frontage site, if we want to allow it in that side yard, then we would need to make sure that we clarify that it could be, or do we want to have it to where it's strictly behind the wall of both frontages?
You know, I think it's, to be quite frank with you, I think it's reasonable to go either way. Some of the lots, especially those that are on Gum Branch, where we have some already, the lots are very wide, and so in those cases, allowing the fence to begin and the stories to begin right at the front wall of the building is not unreasonable as long as it's landscaped. So I can see the value in either, the main thing we need from y'all is, give us some direction to say, do you want it totally behind the building, or do you want it where it can't be any?
Behind the building, front wall of the building.
Yeah, so what's your preference?
I like the front wall, just because I feel like it gives them more opportunity if they have the land, I mean, that's kind of.
Provided it's properly landscaped.
So.
We still want the scene.
Just change be located behind the principal structure, so you could say something located the front wall.
Even with the front wall. If this is the building, basically, draw a line off either side of the building as long as it's behind that line, even if this is a side street, it would be the front facade. So basically, if this is Gum Branch Road, that would be the address, that would be determined to be the front. So, let's use Applebee's as an example, Applebee's has a Western Boulevard address, so we would basically draw that line parallel to Western Boulevard, not with Highway seventeen, which means they could use that area that's adjacent to seventeen, and that's fine, just want to make sure that that's clear and that's the language we need to draft.
And Langley's be the same thing.
Correct, Langley's be the same.
Langley's is on Bell Fork, so you'd have storage on the marine side.
But again, I think the key is the landscape, and I think Richard hit that nail on the head with that.
Okay, so we'll adjust behind the front wall of the principal building, okay? And then the final being, you know, is council interested in fencing, fencing and landscaping, just landscaping, and what type of fencing?
I like what you got there, let them choose a fence according to section 5.4.
So when you say let them select the fence.
Well, 5.4 gives them, I think, some options, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
It is, it does give them a list, the only thing I'd have to make sure on the 5.4 is, does that include? We will write it into where a plain chain link fence without any screening would be allowed if it's not currently written. We'll make sure that that's included, that way, then go just chain link, then go chain link with screening unless you want to prohibit that, and then also add landscaping.
Let them choose on that. If we're fine with the chain link, then let them choose whether they wish to screen it or not.
But it says landscaping and/or a fence are allowed.
Presuming that you could put enough pushes or something to.
Correct, that gives them the opportunity to not put a fence.
It's just visual, you got to block the visual, I guess.
Correct. Unless you want to require landscaping and a fence, or just a fence and no landscaping, or just landscaping, this gives them the option to do just a fence, just the landscaping or both. So what I'm hearing is it needs to be landscaping at minimum, and then if they want to add a fence, the best thing to do is just say you can add a fence.
Landscaping is going to have to be for the visual, like you say, the visual distraction.
Okay.
I would say the fence, I mean.
It says and/or.
Yeah.
And you're saying even with the landscaping, you're saying so areas are not visible from any street view.
Right, so what we'll do is we'll draft language for required landscaping, and then we'll, we won't say anything about a fence or wall, that gives them the option, if they want to fence it, they can fence it, if they don't want to, they don't have to.
Well, I would tell you from years of being in the construction industry, anybody who's going to have outside storage has to invest, and they are going to want fencing. So I think the question is, do you want to just leave it up to them as to what type fence, because I can guarantee you, you're going to have fences.
Well, it goes back to the fencing again, what kind of fence you kind of want there after ten years, after it's been there fifteen, twenty years, what's it going to look like? You know?
Even chain link rust eventually, but it takes a long time.
Or a pipe graffiti on the chain link.
Well, this rusted chain link has a nice patina.
So we'll change this to landscaping and a fence or wall, and we'll make sure that chain link is a permitted type as it relates to this code, this particular use.
And as we've talked about, the fences that made it through Florence were the chain links without any sort of, the worst ones were the wooden privacy fences, they took a beating all over them.
Of course. Anything else you need to mention?
I think that's everything that I need, I appreciate all the feedback you've given, given staff.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'd like to spend the time from now until, let's say about six, on the budget and take a break, and then we'll come back and work until twenty minutes till seven. Gail, if you would come up with a.
I see.
And I do want to point out that we have now a new blue pointer, this is exciting.
It's Duke Blue?
Yes. Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Did it work? Does it actually work? Okay, let's have. On the budget, we would like to review the notes from our session of two weeks ago, we're going to also remind you of solutions, we're going to begin a discussion regarding the actual budget book, the format, the assumptions, and department issues. Before we begin, though, I think all of you have been given the opportunity to get the Reader's Digest version, we also want to remind you that if you would like the Randy Thomas version, which is eighteen pounds and a thousand pages, that that is also available to you.
It's online now.
Is it online now? Gee, you know, what are we doing, we're saving trees?
Love that, love the picture, too.
Yes, when I saw this yesterday for the first time, I thought, boy, if that didn't, if the picture of the marina and, you know, four feet of water around it didn't show what we've been through this past year, nothing did. When you talk about the budget notes, as you know, the public may know, every time we have a council meeting on any issue, especially on the budget, when you ask a question, we record that question, we then provide you with a detailed answer. That doesn't mean that the answers we give you tonight are not accurate, but they are what I'm going to call from the hip answers, we do the best we can. But Gail and the rest of the staff have a responsibility to then give you a detailed answer that you can count on. One of the first questions had to do with what happened in 2007 regarding the sales tax distribution. If you remember in my presentation two weeks ago, we showed that from 2007 to 2018, that the city had actually lost roughly three quarters of a million dollars in sales tax. Mr. Thomas raised the question, did that or did that not include the money that the city actually contributed back to the county? So on this first note, we'd like to give you some information that really talks again about the history of the sales tax. In 2017, the city received a direct distribution from the state of right at thirteen million dollars. It does not reflect the 1.6 million that the city contributed to the county per the distribution agreement at that time. So, the city actually received not thirteen million, but 11.3 million for us to spend, because we sent 1.6 of a million to the county. If you look at the numbers, you can see that the county in 2007 had roughly 30.7 million, the city 13 million, you can see the transfer, there were also payments to other municipalities, as you all recall from. There were also payments to other municipalities, as you all recall from that agreement. In the end, the county received in 2007 roughly 32.3 million, and the city 11.3 million. And again, you can see that in 2018, those are the numbers. So in fairness and in what I'll call correctness, the city is not actually 3/4 of a million less than we were in 2017. For the record, this shows that we're actually about 875,000 more than what we were 12 years ago. Now, when you think about that, and you think of all the growth that we've had, it's still, really? We've gone from 13 million to, or 11 million to 12 million with all of the retail and hotels and everything else that we have done. You know, once again, it really shows that, yeah, the city's benefited from the growth. But we're the ones creating the growth, but we're really not getting the share of the growth that we should be getting.
Our share is actually percentage as the percentage has dropped.
Yes. And remember, from our analysis of value, which we think property values have a direct relations to sales tax creation, about 70% of the county property commercial value is inside the city. And we get about 22% of the distribution.
We were roughly 33% in 2007, roughly.
Sales tax distribution history, we went back in FY 91, it was ad valorem. In 92, it became per capita. That was an agreement reached by the city and county due to the base annexation. The city agreed to hold harmless the county for sales tax loss. The city agreed to reimburse the county for sales tax and beer and wine tax loss, and that was to be phased out over a five-year period. So again, 91, ad valorem, 92, per capita. Moving forward, in 94, the per capita arrangement continued, but it was modified. And you can see how it was modified. Everybody was supposed to notify a year in advance, beer and wine taxes, and the city continued to hold harmless. And the other municipality fund was created, 75,000 came from the city, 150 from the county. In 94, 94 to 2006, we stayed with the per capita. In May of 2006, in agreement, in compliance with the agreement, we received notification that the county intended to change to the ad valorem way. So in March of 2007, the payments ended. And in 2008 and 2009, we used ad valorem. In 2010, the blended method was created. And as you know, that was special legislation, I believe that's correct, Mr. Carter, special just for Onslow County. And while other communities only have two methods, I think technically, legally, we still have three. Is that correct? Okay. Then in 2014, it reverted to ad valorem. Now, quick summary, you can read. Ad valorem, per capita, per capita, per capita, per capita, ad valorem, blended, ad valorem. And of course, as we just said, there are three methods. When you look at the tax distribution, this is a chart that would actually show you based upon the 18, 2018 numbers for each of the methods. So for example, Onslow County, ad valorem, per capita, blended. And you can see each of the municipalities across the board. What I find interesting is if you look at the ad valorem for the county and look at it for the per capita, the county loses $200,000 in round numbers. Gail loves it when I use round numbers. It's okay if I use round numbers?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Carry on.
But also, look at the blended. If they went to the blended, the county would lose $70,000. Okay, now, but let's keep looking.
This is first.
Let's keep looking. What would happen with the city? Well, the city would go on per capita. We would have a very nice $2.5 million gain. And if I'm not mistaken, that's about what we lost when we went, when the county voted to go back to ad valorem. And if you look at blended, we wouldn't go up quite that much, but we would go up a million dollars. So if somebody goes up, that means somebody has to go down. So look across the board. Richlands is pretty much held harmless all the way across. Regardless of the message or the method, they're in the same ballpark. If you look at Swansboro, very little impact if you look at blended, 200,000 impact if you look at per capita. Holly Ridge, now I'm gonna tell you, that's part of the community that's really growing from tax base and population. So their portion is definitely gonna change over time. But if you look at Holly Ridge, ad valorem, Holly Ridge, per capita, and Holly Ridge, blended, it's a pretty substantial hit. Surf City, now I understand that there are, what, somebody told me 90 people who live inside Surf City in Onslow County, and everybody else lives in the rest of the other county, whatever the number is. But you can see that they currently are receiving a substantial benefit from the ad valorem. And if you look at North Topsail, and North Topsail has, I believe, 700 people who are actually residents, they're getting 1.6, almost 1.7 million under per capita because they have such a small population, it would go down. And under blended, it would go down, but not nearly as drastic. So the real issue from my perspective, which is never anybody else's perspective on these things, is that fair is fair. You know, if you're producing it, you should get it. The blended method does not hurt Onslow County. It does hurt those other communities that truly have no population and truly have no commercial establishments. I mean, I don't know for a fact, but I believe that North Topsail has less than two dozen commercial establishments inside the city limits. Now, whether this type of information can win support with anybody else other than Gail and me, hopefully with y'all, it's really telling information. I've always believed that the farmer who plants the field is the farmer who has the right to harvest the crop. And if another farmer doesn't plant the field, for that farmer to harvest a bigger crop than he planted, that just doesn't work. It's not common sense, it's not fair, it's not anything that I can associate with. But on the other hand, if I was at some of these other communities, I would say, woe unto me, this is not fair to me. Well, you know, maybe your property tax should be looked at because if you can ride down the city of Jacksonville and see assessed homes at 80,000, 120,000, but you can ride down to the beach communities and say, there's a million, there's 3 million, there's 1.5 million, maybe you are trying to fund your government on the wrong source. Now, I will be the first to tell you, yes, I came tonight to make a speech, and I'm on my stump. But I am truly, as your manager, I am telling you, this is not fair. And as a council, I would encourage you to do everything you can to convince the county commission, because that's the only group you have to please. It would be nice to get along with North Topsail. It would be nice to get along with these other people. But at the end of the day, the county commission holds the power to determine this. And what I would hope each of you would do, and the two who are not here this evening would do, is allow us to set up a meeting very shortly to talk further with the county commission directly and show them this type of information.
Amen. Amen. Preaching.
You talking about a consolidated meeting televised?
Yes, sir. You know, I was always under the impression it would cost them a million dollars to change. That was, for whatever reason, that was a rule of thumb, or like you said, the gut feel or the, but I mean, if, I mean, this is new information to me. I mean, this is really puts it out there that it's not, the reasoning can't be what I thought it was, because that's not reason enough.
This is the first time I've seen these numbers. I thought it was a lot higher figure that it would impact the county based on what they were telling us, you know?
Well, we would welcome the opportunity for them to show us their numbers. I mean, these are numbers that we have not created. These are numbers that we have received from the county and numbers we've received from the state. So, you know, if they have other numbers and we're wrong, it's just like in note number six. I said two weeks ago, it was A, found out it wasn't, it was Z. We will stand up and say, no, it's actually a million dollar loss. But from our analysis, you can see that going to the blended method, the county would lose 170, I'm sorry, just $70,000, not a million dollars. And if we're wrong, we want the county to meet with us and show us where their data is correct and our data is incorrect.
Richard, is that blended method what they use in the past? That is 60% ad valorem, 40% per capita?
It is.
Okay. That's just for clarity. You're duplicating what has been used in the past.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Actually, I hadn't thought to say that. So we're a good team, John. Thanks for doing that.
Well, the taxpayer in the city of Jacksonville should be appalled by this.
Well, here's another number that you should be appalled at. Let's look at it on a per person basis. Ad valorem, Jacksonville is receiving $162 per person on the ad valorem method. North Topsail is receiving $2,200. If you look at per capita, where everybody gets it on population, everybody gets the same number, $197. And if you did it on the blended method, you could see that even the blended method, North Topsail is gonna get almost $1,400 a person, while Jacksonville is still getting $176 a person. So, you know, those are the numbers.
Obviously, at the state level, there's not a whole lot of concern about this either. You got other cities that are probably faced with the same problem, but no action out of the legislature to do anything to even things up. There was things that are a bit of concern there for what's going on in the cities that, you know, most of these cities are also producing a lot of the sales tax to begin with, not just Jacksonville, but other cities like Great Wall or Wilmington, places like that. I just wonder how the distribution is there, and I'm sure, you know, there's only two methods that's being used, so it's either the per capita or the word. Be interested to know how that does get you up.
Well, in three slides, we'll.
Okay. I'll sit there and wait then.
Now, one of the things that Gail looked at is the state law on, you know, sales tax where it's actually created. And it's created from a number of articles in the state law. And I have to tell you that, you know, when you look at Article 39, it's point of sales. You look at Article 40, it's population, 42, point of sales, and so forth. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't really do anything for us other than provide you with the state law that tells you how you can collect the taxes. We should, I think that you're aware, that Senator Brown has introduced a bill very similar to a bill that was introduced in 2015. And it would modify the way the distribution occurs, and it would certainly benefit the poorer counties. We do not have data at this point that's sufficient for us to tell you what impact his bill would have on the city of Jacksonville. We do know from just casual conversation with staff at the league that larger communities such as Charlotte and Raleigh and big communities would be adversely affected by his proposal. But the real impact would be on us, we're still trying to study that. So moving on to the mayor's question. How is it distributed out of the 100 counties? Well, it's almost 50/50, you know?
But Richard, part of that, though, the reason it's like that, we're a unique community. Most communities that are balanced across, they're not living with beach communities that your ad valorem is so much different than your per capita because of beach properties. And that's where the skews is. So when you look at these, and there's still a lot of counties that don't like the way that it's done as well, a lot of cities, but, you know, when you look at cities that are like us, they're, it negatively impacts them one way or the other on the ad valorem side because of the beach communities and the high values. It's not as, you, a place like Raleigh, it's gonna be more balanced, or Wilmington, more balanced, even though they do have Riceville Beach and some others. But we're unique because we've got all these other communities that are affected.
Well, it's interesting that we are the only ones in the state that have the third option. Because as you said, we're unique, but we're not totally unique. I mean, pick any number you want, there's at least another dozen cities that would fall into the same, but the blended method went into effect, how many years ago?
2010.
2010. Okay, so nobody else has signed up for that for some reason. So, but again, you asked, I believe it was actually Mr. Bittner two weeks ago, ask, what was the split by counties? 52 per capita, 48?
And I guess my point and what I was trying to say earlier is in those communities that are 50/50 split, they're probably more balanced monetarily, 50/50 split. They can go one way or another, and the difference may be very minute. Whereas in our case, it's about $3 million. So I think that's where the difference is in those numbers.
If you were gonna try to improve the conditions of the county, say for, for instance, Jones County, doesn't have a whole lot of commercial business or anything there, the property values are fairly low, how is, the only way you're gonna help them, you're gonna change it to per capita, correct? It would have to move more towards a per capita distribution of some money, right?
Well, actually, Mayor, I would answer that a little differently than what you asked it. Communities like Jones County have such a small population and such an ad valorem base that's so small that neither of the current formulas work for it. What you'd almost have to have is what I would call a set aside. And what that would mean is, let's just say statewide, and I have no idea, let's say statewide that sales tax creates $5 billion. You'd have to change the law to say that the following counties, because of the economic issues, we're just gonna take off the top of that a billion dollars, 500 million, anything you want. And we're going to simply parse that out. Because you could go to all three methods in Jones County, and it would not solve their financial issues. I mean, I know that you live up there. Would you agree with that statement or not?
I think so.
And Richard, didn't the old way, the original way that we used to do it when we used to, and Jalen may know this a lot better than any of us because he's been around the longest. When we used to reimburse the county back some funds, wasn't that money targeted to go to rural areas?
Or to rural, not to my knowledge, sorry, just went to the county.
I was always told it was for education. You know, in other words, it was a, it was a, we were trying to hold the county harmless at least as far as impact on schools.
On school.
That's what I was told.
I think it was going into their general.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, yeah, yeah. We didn't, I don't know that it, I don't know that it was necessarily earmarked for that, but that was the reasoning behind it, yes.
But we were given, we were given money, we were doing that pool of money to give back to these municipalities.
Yeah, and if you'll notice on this slide back at note seven, in addition to the million dollars plus that we were returning to the county, the city and the county both contributed to a fund that went to the smaller municipalities. Now, none of it went to other counties. But personally, not that it'll ever win the state legislature, and you may not support it either, the only way small counties are actually gonna have any money to spend is simply by some special set aside. Because they simply, I mean, what's the tax rate in Jones County?
A lot. It was, it was 80 cents the last time I looked.
And let's say you raise it 10 cents more in Jones County, you still don't have a tax base. So the only way they're gonna build schools and things like that are what Senator Brown did this past year in the budget. He set aside 3.5 or 5 million, or whatever the number was, and specifically said, here, Jones County, go build a school.
With a very big school.
Junior high school and the high school, I don't know.
Yeah, yes.
And maybe the elementary school now.
I think it's all the way. I think it's K through 12, I think.
It is.
But you know, when you're looking, when you're looking at the tax rates, you know, I understand the Jones County situation, something has to be done there. I mean, you know, there's really no way for them to do some of the things they need to do to serve those people there. But say. But say, for instance, in Jacksonville, we're paying, what's our tax rate now?
Sixty-four point two.
Sixty-four point two cent. Or, and you go to North Topsail Beach, move down there, and your tax rate is thirty-nine and a half cent or something, thirty-nine cent?
Because Jacksonville people are helping to subsidize.
Exactly. So, I mean, there's no parity there. I mean, if I own a five hundred thousand dollar house in Jacksonville, a five hundred thousand dollar house, if there is such a thing in North Topsail, there are still five hundred thousand dollar houses.
Well, I think the real question is, is there such a thing in Jacksonville as a five hundred thousand dollar house?
There are even, there's a couple, but there's not many of them. But, you know, you understand what I'm saying, is, I mean, it's not fair, it's just not fair on its face.
Well, and the other unfairness is the state distributes the counties based on per capita. What if the state distributed at their choice, per capita or ad valorem, how would the counties appreciate that?
It wouldn't fare so well.
It wouldn't fare so well the other way. And when you look at it, and we've done the research at the league on this, if the state had the same election that they have with the cities, they would be in trouble. Because on an ad valorem basis across the state, they would be major losers. So, why wouldn't we have the same courtesy at receiving it based on per capita? Because that's really the right way to distribute sales tax, is based on population, not based on values.
People, people, people pay the sales tax, so you should be returned based on.
Based on population.
Yes.
Because that's what you're supporting your retail sector with.
Only makes sense.
It's just a very outdated and.
Could we, could we get the information to whoever, you know, on the, on the county side and just let them?
And our legislators.
Let them, let them shoot at it a little bit, and, and I, yeah, send it to our legislators, let them know, hey, guys.
This is an issue that really has to be addressed, not pointing at our particular county commissioners, but at the process. The process is not correct, it's not in the best interest of the people that pay city taxes and county taxes, they're not getting their just house tax revenue back, it's, it's an unfair, it causes higher taxation. This method causes higher local taxation.
And also remember, this method, the ad valorem method, rewards you for raising your property tax.
That's what I'm saying.
Because remember the slide we showed you two weeks ago, when the county did the right thing, helping the school board, they raised it three cents. I don't believe that the county expected, but guess what? They got an extra four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of sales tax because they raised the property tax.
Let the, let the county shoot at it and see how that compares to their information. And if our information is correct, then, you know, that certainly, I think, would go a ways, hopefully a long ways in convincing those commissioners who are unsure of the situation. You know, if they're really concerned about the money side, then, then this might reassure them, maybe.
Note two, you asked about the Affordable Care Act, and you can see from the information, in fifteen, we had to pay two thousand a year, expired in nineteen. We also paid a second fee of roughly fifty-nine thousand, I believe, once we told you sixty-three. The number actually varies depending on the number of employees you have. So, generally, fifty-nine thousand dollars, it didn't, it decreased each year and has now expired. So, we are in the last year, the current fiscal year, we're in the last year of paying anything towards the Affordable Care Act. Is that correct?
I think two thousand, October one, two thousand nineteen is in two thousand.
Okay. You also ask about health insurance premiums. As we mentioned to you before, and you'll see in a minute, we have spent the fund balance, and we simply have to do something with premiums. You can see that we have actually three plans, one is the seventeen hundred and fifty dollar deductible, twenty-seven fifty deductible, and then the two thousand dollar deductible or the HSA plan. Now, let's go back a second and remember, the employee pays each paycheck, so that's twenty-six checks a year. So, if you go down to the family plan at seventeen hundred and fifty dollar deductible, you can see that that's going up forty dollars every two weeks at fifteen percent. That's over a thousand dollars a year. Fortunately, we only have about a dozen employees who are in that category. One of the reasons why is the premiums are what they are, and the deductible at seventeen fifty, you know, you just can't afford that anymore. If you look across the twenty-seven fifty and stay with the family plan, you can see that that goes up twenty-eight dollars. But even when you multiply twenty-eight dollars times twenty-six paychecks, you're up over seven hundred dollars. And if you look at the HSA, and here you're dealing with fourteen dollars a paycheck, I'm sorry, twenty-four dollars a paycheck, and you multiply that times twenty-six, you're up over five hundred dollars. At the end of the day, I have to simply say to you folks, it hurts, but it is what it is. Unless you want to start using the tax dollar to further subsidize the health plan, our recommendation is a fifteen percent increase. You can make it fourteen percent, you make it thirteen percent, you're not really saving the employee anything of substance. On the other hand, what you are hurting is the fund balance that we're trying to build. And let's look at the fund balance history. At one point, we had had great success, and we didn't have to raise premiums. And in two thousand fourteen, we were sitting with one and a half million dollars in the fund reserve for the health fund, not in the general fund balance, but in the health fund. Why was it kept in a different fund? Because that one point five million came from the city, but it also came from employee contribution. So, it wouldn't have been fair to move that into the general fund. So, it was a restricted fund, or whatever the right accounting term is. You can also see that we needed premium increases in fifteen and sixteen. And we said, with a million and a half dollars in the savings account, it's not really logical or fair to the employee to raise premiums. We should have, in hindsight, but that was what I said to you four or five years ago, and unfortunately, you listened to me, and that's what we did. But you can see, we've now spent it down. And as you will recall, we're gonna spend a projected hundred and sixty-eight thousand out of the one ninety-one that's currently there, and we project we're gonna end this year with fifty-three thousand dollars. Now, I will tell you, if I had fifty-three thousand dollars in my savings account after paying my income tax, I might feel pretty good. But when you're dealing with roughly a five million dollar program, and it's supposed to be self-funded, fifty-three thousand dollars, I mean, that's not even, that is one percent. That's one percent reserve.
On industry, industry standards, say you ought to have about twenty percent, so we should be round a million dollars.
So, those, those decreases in, or that change, that decrease in that fund, has that been brought about by claims? Is it, the claims are just outweighing?
Yes. It was, Mayor, it was where we knew the claims were gonna be high, we knew the revenue was gonna be less than the claim, and we said, we can either raise premiums and keep the fund reserve, or we can subsidize the premiums for a couple of years. We did that, and this has been the result. So, we're in a position where we have to raise rates. Just to get back to break even, you have to raise them six percent, and that doesn't do anything to add to the fifty-three thousand dollars we're projecting in the reserve. So, as you'll recall, sorry about that, as you'll recall, we showed you, in order to build a two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand reserve, it comes up to fifteen percent. Now, everything we're gonna talk about tonight, we're not asking you to endorse, except this. When I say endorse, that's the wrong word. We need for you to give us a vote that will be. And the reason why is, it is April the sixteenth. If we're going to increase the premiums to whatever level you're comfortable with, we have to know shortly, as in about seven o'clock tonight, if possible, because it takes us quite a bit of time to go through all of the required notifications to employees, giving them time to decide, are they gonna change plans, are they gonna do something else with their health insurance? We can't wait to the adoption of the budget. So, at this point, I'm gonna ask Gail, does she have any other comments on health insurance before we turn it over to you to discuss this?
No, like I said, we really need to be at about a million dollars, and we're not gonna get that, get there this coming year, but we need to be moving in that direction.
And, and the fifteen percent we're talking about is not just to, on the employee side, is it matched on the employer side, right?
Absolutely.
So, you're talking about the city contributing a lot more.
Well, actually, and I should have put this slide in, well, actually, there it is, Glenn, thanks, this is great. To build a four hundred thousand dollar reserve, fifteen percent, six percent to get to even, nine percent to build the reserve, city's gonna have to put in five hundred and fifty thousand, the employee one seventy-five. Now, I think Glenn probably added the next slide that showed, ah, look at that, he's correct. This is what actually comes from the general fund, and then the others come from the other funds. So, at fifteen percent, you're making a commitment that you will add out of the general fund four hundred and three thousand. Glenn, that was great magic, thank you for doing it. What are your thoughts?
I'll make the motion that we adopt a fifteen percent increase to sustain or, again, to rebuild our fund balance.
I'll say it. I'll say it.
Discussion. Any further discussion?
Painful decision, but.
Comments?
I will give you one comment, as, as you know, you have been very kind to let me serve on the North Carolina League Municipalities Risk Management Services Board of Trustees. We went through a similar exercise for all of the municipalities that are covered by the league's health pool. There are many, many cities that are getting thirty-five and forty percent premium increases. And the reason why is they are fifty employer cities with the employee base aging and insurance costs continuing to skyrocket. There's gonna come a day when, you know, it's difficult for us to produce four and a half million dollars for this, but you think of communities like Maysville, or communities that are smaller, like maybe Elizabeth Lake, or something like that. I honestly don't know how they're going to afford to stay in, in the health business, but by law, they're required to. Any other comments?
How about our wellness programs, are they still pretty active, or are they?
Our wellness program is what I'm gonna call marginally successful. And the reason why it's marginally successful is the vast majority of the people who take part in the health program are like Andy over there. He does two hundred push-ups every day, he runs, he drives his horse, he's in great shape. You look at Kerry Terrell, Kerry Terrell walks five miles before he eats anything for breakfast. The wellness program is not addressing.
What about Anthony, what is he?
He's hiding, we just move on from now. You know, the people, if you look at the monthly newsletter or email that I send out to update you and the employees, obesity, diabetes, hypertension, those are the things that are driving about eighty percent of our costs. And because of the HIPAA regs, which are the federal laws, I cannot, as the manager, and you as the council, we cannot require any employee to do anything, other than pay a premium if they want part of the program. But, for example, if a person is a diabetic, and they're not taking care of themselves, we don't have the legal right to know that Joe Blow is not really taking care of himself, but we see every month the cost for all of his medication, and the trips to the emergency room, and so on and so forth. Mayor, that's the group that until we as a society find a way to address, again, obesity, diabetes, and hypertension, you know, you look at people who have knee replacements, well, did they have that, like Mr. Bittner, because when he was quarterback for the Pittsburgh Steelers, he got a knee injury? Or is it because they're three hundred pounds and their knee is out worn out? You can, you can tie so many of the large medical bills, even though it's not directly, it's indirectly to those three things. We try any number of things with wellness. I'm gonna tell you that Helen does a great job, and Kimberly staff, they do a great job, just not ringing the bell. The one thing that has rung the bell very, very well is the phone and doc program. You know, you can be three o'clock in the morning, be at home, your child wakes up with a, with a fever, you don't have to go to the emergency room, you don't have to leave your house, you pick up the phone, you dial phone and doc, there's no deductible, there's no payment to you, the city pays the exact same bill every month, regardless of whether one person uses it or five hundred people use it. And through that, we've been able to save about two hundred thousand a year. And that's two hundred thousand out of a five million dollar program. So, once again, that's what, four percent reserve? So, that's, that's important.
The tiers that you have, or the, you have the one that has a lower deductible with a little higher payment, that one. And you have the higher deductible, and you have the HSA. Is there anything in those particular, like, in the state health plan, they have what's called enhanced plan, a standard plan, where it's, in the enhanced plan, you have to meet certain criteria, like you, smoking cessation, screening, certain screenings and everything to be able to qualify for certain deductible and premium. You know, if you don't, then you have to move into what they call a different class, or a seventy-thirty plan versus an eighty-twenty plan. Do we do anything like that?
Actually, we, we don't, and that's actually a very good idea. If you'll recall, we used to have four plans, and I believe it was, I think at one point, we had a seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible, a thousand deductible, a fifteen hundred, or something like that. We had four plans. We eliminated the lowest deductible plan because the premium's just got to a place where nobody could afford it. But that's a good idea, we can continue to work with our consultant, Hink East Staff, to see if, if that might have some potential.
I mean, I know that, they have things where you have to choose a certain preferred provider, you have to do a health screening test and all that, and, you know, to be able to qualify, and you have to sign or do a smoking cessation thing. And, of course, that's designed to lower the premium, so, just a thought.
We will look into that. Any other comments before we ask you then to vote on the matter?
All right, we have a motion and a second, on favor six five, I say, and I, all opposed. Motion carries.
I think this would be a good point for us to take a break, and we'll come back in about five minutes.
Let's take that.
Several weeks ago, we also talked with you about the solutions to our roughly $2 million challenge as we put together the budget this year. And you'll recall seeing the summary of things that the manager's office was recommending. You may also recall that we were very specific in saying, here are the things that the manager could recommend to you that would total roughly $992,000. The things that we're recommending is a modest increase in the recreation fee, you saw those last time, some planning fee increases, a reduction in city operations, and I'm now able to tell you that I can commit to reducing salaries and staff through staggering or even holding positions that, I can't give you a list, but they will occur as they occur for $250,000. The other thing that I would recommend to you is on the 800 megahertz, using whatever money is needed out of the 4 cent reserve, and you would use that for a three-year period. In talking to Mr. Bittner, who of course is not here this evening, he did tell me that he could support the 15% premium increase, that he could not support using any of the 4 cent fund for the 800 megahertz. At a point tonight or at a future date, we do need for you to, to say yes or no to those recommendations, and also to say yes or no to other items that are on that list. When you look at the format for the budget, it is the same format that we have historically used. If you have your laptop, or if you have your book, or if you just like to look on the screen, you'll recall that we put all the information for each budget on concurrent pages. So you can see from the manager's budget, you can see the funding source, you can see the overhead allocation, and you can see the total expenditures, and then the line item rollup. You can also see again, in a little larger, that here are the funding sources for the manager's budget. You can see that it is broken up very nicely between water and sewer, solid waste, stormwater. Your budget is also broken up that same way. Why? Because you are the board of directors for each of those funds. You're not just the city council for the general fund and for the city, but you sit, whether John would have the correct title, but you are the voting board for water and sewer, and for solid waste, and for stormwater. And then, of course, you can see the details that compare from 18 all the way through 20. What in my budget, you can see salaries, insurance, all those rollup line items. You can also see comments, and you can also see stat. Those, that format is the same format you will find through the entire book. We have asked you in the past, were you comfortable with that format? You have told us yes. I hate to tell you, it's too late to change for this draft, but if you'd like that changed for next year, let us know, and I'm sure Gail will be happy to accommodate. But this is the format that we use so the public can see. One of the great things about that is if you want to know anything about any department, police department, fire department, mayor and council, you can look on three pages and find all the information you want. You don't have to go to page three, back to page 87, up to page 400. It's all in one place. On budgeted positions, it's the same. You have 563 full-time, five part-time benefited, nine part-time non-benefited. I will remind you that last year, in the current budget, you authorized us to make a modification on the non, I'm sorry, on the part-time non-benefited, where we now have 20?
I think 25.
I think we authorized 15 and we.
Yeah, we had so.
They just plundered a couple, so about 20 maybe.
Okay. But those are positions that we were hiring through temp agencies, and we're now hiring them directly. And I can tell you, that has been very, very successful. We're not recommending any change to that though, at this point. But that's your employee base that we're recommending no changes for the coming year. Here are the assumptions. First assumption is that the tax rate will remain 64.2. Now, in solving the budget dilemmas, you may decide that it's going to have to go up, but in putting the budget together, we've assumed you do not support a tax increase. Sales tax will decrease slightly. I will build funding this way steady. It's going to be almost the same number, we don't have the final number, but we feel comfortable. Franchise fees are taxy steady. No increase in the stormwater fee. Due power electricity rates went up 5.29, it's built into your budget. No increase in commercial solid waste fees, and that the residential collection will continue to be subsidized by the general fund. You notice that in the budget assumptions, we did not include a residential fee increase. That is something that I would like you to consider. Also, health insurance increased at 15%, which you agreed to this evening. At the general fund nonprofit, the general fund nonprofit contributions, it's built into the budget at 50,000. That's what you've had in the past. In talking to community development and Lily Gray, I would remind you that the general fund and CDVG both contribute money to nonprofits. Currently, you're contributing 50,000, and Lily is contributing through CDVG 30,000. Lily feels very comfortable increasing that by 30,000. So what that would do is reduce your general fund contribution from 50 down to 20. It would increase CDVGs from 30 up to 60. But that's a policy matter that you would have to, to make. We also have assumed that the rates for water and sewer will increase 2.25% as we discussed last year. The assumption is that the 800 megahertz will come from the capital reserve. If you say to us, as Mr. Bittner did, he can't support that, you just need to tell us at some point. Development and recreation fees will increase, as you've seen before, and that we will balance the budget as we have historically done, using fund balance.
Will you be able to run your water and sewer model prior to budget approval, just to see?
We're actually, they have, they have already run that model, and we will get the results for you. Fuel prices, while we know it's going up at the pump, you can see that the policy that you established many years ago, that we were not going to vary up and down, up and down, chase prices. So unleaded is budgeted at 3.15, diesel 3.45, and you can see what we've generally been paying. One of the nice things about that is this is where your fund balance has been very positively impacted, because when we were buying gas at the, you know, pick a number, at the 180 mark, and you had budgeted 3.15, at the end of the year, you have several hundred thousand dollars to be able to put back into your fund balance. And we would not recommend changing that assumption. Department issues, as you know, we, we asked the departments to put together their base budget, and anything that they want to change, they need to issue what we call a DI, department issue. This year, we had 39 department issues. Seven of those were in the general fund that I have approved and are in your budget. 12 were denied, 12 were pending. Four in water and sewer, none in stormwater, one in other. To be honest with you, I can't remember what the other was. Do you remember? It was other.
The electric pump, proflated fuel.
That's right, in, in fleet. So those 12 are in the base budget. There are 12 others that I've denied, that you're welcome to approve, and then there are 15 that are pending, and I will give you my recommendations on whether they should move forward or not. Here are the ones that were not recommended. And remember, if you look at the denied column of 12, adding an additional member to the fire department. Engine seven replacement. Fire training captain being added. Six additional police officers being added. One part-time police officer being added. One central permitting specialist being added. One building code inspector being added. And one building maintenance inspector, specialist being added. I will say to you that we've looked at these, you can see the majority are personnel. If you were going to increase your staff, then the one area that we could look at is the building maintenance specialist, in my opinion. It was the hardest call for me to make. And the reason why is when you look at the amount of work that Allen Baker and his people are doing, still trying to recover from the storm, that is an area where they're stretched thin. But given the deficit that we're facing, I had a hard time recommending adding employees. But that's your final call. The other thing we'd like to point out is engine seven replacement. Yes, you want to make monthly payments, and the annual payment's 105,000. That doesn't break the bank. But on the other hand, we're going to have to find when, when the fire equipment costs what it costs, we're just going to have to get used to having those pieces of equipment last a little longer and a little longer. You're coming up in the replacement cycle, two or three years for the big ladder truck, and that's like 1.8 million dollars. They don't give those things away anymore. But those are ones that, we will ship you all of these slides, as we did the last time. What we'd like for you to do is look through them, and at the next meeting, come back prepared to say we dis- them, and at the next meeting, come back prepared to say, we disagree with this one, we wanted in the budget, or we agree with that one, we are not supporting it to go in the budget. Any of these that you want to have a quick discussion on though, before we move, are the ones that are pending. Okay? Let's look at the pending ones. There were four of the pending ones that I can recommend to you. A sod cutter, which, sounds like, what do you do with that? Well, I guess you cut sod. But given the amount of ball field maintenance we do, and the amount of park maintenance, instead of renting the sod cutter, it's actually more cost effective for us to simply buy one. Bleachers. As you know, for the major parades, we haul out our bleachers. Guess what? We've hauled them out, and they're getting pretty rickety. So we either need to buy new ones, or we need to say, we're no longer going to put them out for Veterans Day, we're no longer going to put them out for the Christmas parade, we're no longer going to put them out for some of our special events. If you think of the Christmas, or even two weeks away, when we have the Jacksonville Jamboree, those are the bleachers that we move everywhere. And over time, they have just gotten to the point where we either need to replace them, or we just need to sideline them and quit supplying that. The digital sign at the commons wreck, this is not the TDA sign. This is, when you enter the commons, before we did the parking lot, there was a wooden sign there. So we would like to replace that wooden sign with a digital sign, so that we can put messages up there that say, for example, you know, a pickleball tournament, or, you know, some special event. And then the treadmills would come out of the wellness fund, and that would be spread over several of our accounts. Because we are trying to, or those treadmills for--
For recreation.
For recreation, okay. Sorry. This is for the senior program, or for the adult center, we normally call it the senior program. But those are treadmills over there, and those treadmills are really heavily used and getting pretty worn out. So those are the four that I can recommend. Also, closed captioning. If you'll recall, Carmen and Anthony, Allen Baker--
Indiana.
Indiana, I mean, whole Danny Bryant, they did a great job with our ADA compliance report. One of the things that came out of that is, we really need to set up, as part of our computer system for meetings like this, the closed captioning system. It's about $8,000. We would certainly recommend that to you. Now, not recommended, but pending, a part-time shop assistant, cybersecurity engineer, and I guess that was it. Okay. Any questions on these, or any thoughts about any of these? Okay. We have two major pending issues that we will bring you information on. One is a potential change in the way that fire and emergency services personnel are paid, and that would be a step plan. The other, of course, is the general employee compensation. Current consumer price index is 2.2 percent. Here are some options. We're not asking you to decide, we're just giving this to you as information. A 1 percent increase would cost the general fund 164,000. Now, if you think back, that's a lot lower number than it used to be. Why? Because you adopted the step plan for the fire, for the police department. And when you took that, whatever the number is, let's say 80 policemen out of the cost of living, it reduced this. But remember, the step plan is built into the base budget. If you adopt a step plan for the fire department, this number will also go down. Depending on what you want to do, that number could go down, you're talking again, 88 personnel, but only about, let's say 60 of them are eligible for that step plan. So let's say it will go down another , let's say 30, 40,000. But 1 percent would cost your funds this. 2 percent would cost twice as much. Now, even I can do that simple math. But Gail did check me when she found out my handy-dandy calculator. Another option that you've used in the past is simply $1,000 for each employee under 500, or under $50,000. There are any kind of options you want. And if you, you can see the impact. And then option four is whatever you wind up being comfortable with. We are trying to gather data right now on what Onwasa and the county may be doing. I will tell you that I've had an unofficial email from Mr. Hudson on what he's going to be recommending to Onwasa, but since he hasn't actually recommended that to Onwasa, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to say that, because he should reveal that to his board, obviously Mr. Lozera, Mr. Bittner, and the other board members, before I talk about it in public. But those are pending issues that we have. Any thoughts at this point? Okay. We have seven minutes. So, the proposed schedule is next week, we really roll up our sleeves and get to it. When you look at all of these budgets, they're basically vanilla. I don't know how much time you want to spend, but I can tell you, I mean, mayor and council's budget went up, sure. Why? Because of things you don't control. Insurance costs, obviously, electricity, the cost of running city hall, you share in those. The clerk's budget, well, elections are in there for the first time since two years ago, and I believe Carmen, that's 60-something, $68,000 to run our elections this coming November. But all of these are in your book, and we can decide whether we want to run through them quickly, or whether you simply want to concentrate on the big-ticket departments like police and fire. Now, Gail pleaded with me to let her make a detailed presentation on finance, but I wasn't going to go there. On the 30th, everything that we can't cover on the 23rd, because remember, we will have no time limit, because there isn't a meeting after the workshop. So we can simply move through these as quickly as we can, and then of course, May the 7th. We do want to have a public hearing on May the 7th. That is not a normal 7 o'clock meeting, but in order to keep the schedule moving, we would like to have a special public hearing as part of the workshop. And then, potential adoption, the 14th, or, depending on when you're ready. Real quickly, let me show you how simple some of these departments can be. Here's information on the general fund balance. You can see what the unassigned number is. Remember, the unassigned is a part of the total fund balance. The fund balance also has, do you guys know what's assigned? Does Gail want to assign this? Does Gail assign?
There are a number of different categories that are set aside to pay obligations from the prior year, and money that's set aside to pay the separation allowance, PAVO money that's restricted. There are a number of categories that restrict fund balance.
But you can see as part of the general fund budget, right now, unassigned at 16.7 million would give you a 34 percent ratio. Here's our projection on ad valorem tax, sales tax, unrestricted, restricted, and charges per service. And you can see that the ad valorem taxes haven't gone up much. Gail did get information today from Harry Smith that continues to support our position that we will lose $80 million in property values, not the 55 that we were previously told. Now, remember, it started off at 110 because of the storm, 110 million, then came down to 80, then we were told that it might be as low as 55. Well, as of either yesterday or today--
I received an email from him yesterday afternoon, and it's very close to the 80 million.
And with that 80 million, we will lose about 300 and--
Two eighty.
Well, let's just say $300,000 in property tax. Again, you can see the other numbers that we have there. Any questions on what we're projecting as far as your revenue? Is your sales tax down just because of the league recommended, or you think we're just--
Well, our percentage is down as a whole. And normally, what we do is we budget based on the last 12 months. But as you know, the last month was extremely high. So we disregarded that, used the year ago number to be conservative. I just don't see that 25 percent continuing.
And that'll benefit in this year though, or not?
Yes, yes. We'll exceed our budget this year.
I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Away from this, going back to the 800 system, on that, on the 800 system, we owe 600,000, 600,000 is our share. Is that correct?
Generally, 600,000 a year for the next three years.
For the next three years.
And then it falls down to zero.
And one cent of the capital reserve fund is equal to what?
350.
350,000.
So basically, what you're saying is you're pledging two cents of your capital reserve to pay for that.
How much of that, how much of that is available that's not obligated?
We will give you a breakout of that. Generally, we have about, if my memory is correct, about 200,000 obligated, and you produce about 1.4 a year.
118,000 was obligated this year of the 1.4.
We'll get you the data on that. I'm just going to say, while you're on that note, I'd like to see what it has been since inception, the one, the four cent fund, would it just-- When you say what it's been, you mean the gross number that's-- Sure. How it's changed since inception. We can also show you some of the big-ticket things that you have purchased using that, such as obviously the city hall.
The other thing, is there any of the capital projects that possibly could be put off a year that may impact?
In looking, the impact that you're going to have by doing the use of the four cent fund for the 800 megahertz is going to be to delay some of your recreation projects. While that's not necessarily what you'd like to do because of quality of life, I would remind you, you're finishing up a marina, you've just finished up an amphitheater, you've just built two splash pads over the last two years, you're building new bathhouses, and you are building a very state-of-the-art playground facility at Northeast Creek. What it will push back will be the modernization of some of your other smaller playgrounds, and it will also move back any opportunity to really improve your sports fields. The other part that I'll remind you is, we don't know what we're really going to do with Jack M yet. We're out there doing surveys, literally today. I know that Mr. Jackson's going to be pounding the pavement in his neighborhood, but, you know, you can only spend it once. But we will also give you a recap of the CIP items that are being delayed. And with that, holding to the 20 minutes till, unless you have questions, we will meet a week from tonight and continue.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?